Welcome everyone to the April seventeenth meeting of the Orno Planning Commission. Start each meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. We ask that you join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which was established, one nation, united states, liberty and justice for all.
So the first item on the agenda tonight is an oath of office for Scott Kirshner and Gary Kramer.
Yes, good evening Chair, congratulations on Chris Ballas as well for being our new Chair to the Plaid of the Mission. And then Scott Kirshner and Gary Kramer have been appointed as Commissioners. So if you would please stand and raise your right hand and then repeat after me. I state your name.
I am Gary Kramer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Plaid of the Commissioner.
Of the Office of Plaid of the Commissioner.
Of the City of Orno.
Of the City of Orno.
In the County of Hennepin.
In the County of Hennepin.
In the State of Minnesota.
In the State of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you so much and congratulations. Please sign the Oaths of Office and then I will get them stamped and signed appropriately. So thank you. I'll collect them at the end.
Okay, the second item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Any discussion? Any motions?
It's moved. Second.
They had a first and a second. That was Kirshner and Erickson with the second. Put it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Third item is the approval of the minutes for March twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Don't hear motion? Second. I have a first and a second. Let's put it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That brings us to the public hearings. The first public hearing is LA twenty-three dash two, City of Orno for fourteen forty-nine Shoreline Drive and fourteen seventy-five Shoreline Drive, Request for Vacation of Existing Right-of-Way No Longer Needed For Result of the County Road Fifteen Reconstruction. Ms. Oliver.
Yes, good evening Chair and Commissioners. Melanie, if you want to go to page one of that PDF. Tonight in front of you, you have an application to vacate unused right-of-way along County Road Fifteen and from a Tannager Bridge Reconstruction Project from Hennepin County. The City of Orno has been, is requesting to vacate the portions of the right-of-way of unused fourteen forty-nine Shoreline Drive and fourteen seventy-five Shoreline Drive. Hennepin County conducted a road project along this right-of-way and reconstructing that Tannager Bridge. As part of that project, land from those abutting properties adjacent to the bridge was required to the north of the existing right-of-way to allow for realignment of that bridge. Portions of the existing County Road Fifteen right-of-way are no longer needed to support that road improvement. The City Council, the Orno City Council in twenty twenty passed a resolution attached in your packet tonight confirming that the unused land would be vacated. Hennepin County completed the road project, which realigned the county road and the Tannager Bridge in twenty twenty-two. And the county has transferred that land to the City of Orno in order to vacate, to follow the vacation process accordingly. The city is not aware of any utilities located within the right-of-way space and we have notified private utilities. It is my understanding also that the utilities were working in conjunction with the county as part of this road project. DNR notifications did happen and they have submitted a letter saying that they are in support of the vacation with no objection. For analysis, the land does not serve a public purpose and does not have use for city services. City Council approved that resolution in twenty twenty in support of vacating the unused land. Staff would recommend approval of the proposed vacation. No public comment was submitted to staff for this application, so staff is recommending approval. I do happy to answer any questions. I believe there is an abutment property owner here as well that may want to speak.
Any questions for staff?
No.
Any, would like to open up the public hearing? Anyone from the public would like to comment on this application, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, my name is Richie Anderson. I own the property of fourteen forty-nine Shoreline Drive. Just so everybody's clear, when this project started, my agreement with the Hennepin County was any property they took on one side, they would get back, I would get back on the other side, which was the easement we're talking about now, it's not being used. Had to go back to the city first. I've been waiting since twenty twenty to get this resolved. And when the bridge project started, I said, I'm not going to hold you up. They made me an offer to buy the easement that they needed. We had an agreement. I said, you can take more construction property if you want it. Said, whatever you take on this side, I will not hold you up. Whatever you take on this side, I want back on this side, which I'm not getting apples for apples because they still need that little carve out there for the drainage, which is on the southeast corner of the bridge. That, that is not going, going back. They kept that easement for the drainage. So it's not like we're getting something for nothing. It was agreed upon in the beginning. I didn't hold them up on price. I gave more property than they needed for the construction easement. And so it's not like the City of Orno is giving us something. It's been in the works since that bridge was made. And in twenty twenty-two, as you can see in the document, county final, I've been paying an attorney to get this thing done. Looks like it was done in twenty twenty-two. I finally called the guy that made the agreement with me. I said, let's go. And so you can see it was signed in twenty-three. So, but anyway. Not like you're giving us something that we didn't have an agreement to get. So seems simple to me, but government.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Bring it back up here for discussion. Anyone like to take a stab at it? Mr. Lee?
I do have kind of a unique circumstance in this particular project because I worked very closely with the Hennepin County Deputy Right-of-Way Officer that actually arranged to have the realignment. And the reason being so, on the other side of the bridge from these properties was another property owner that needed some expertise that I had because I had nearly twenty-five years of working with these right-of-way acquisitions and the right-of-way changes. So I assisted Mr. Wilson, whose name you'll see, you'll see is spelled incorrectly because it has two L's and it's kind of unusual spelling. But it gave me an opportunity to work very closely with the Hennepin County Deputy that did oversee the acquisition and the right-of-way alignment change. I was very aware of two precedents at that time. And that's the one, there is a vacation like this. The state mandates that if there is a abandonment or the county decides that they no longer have a use for the property, it must actually pass through the ownership and be deeded to the municipality in which it exists before it goes to typically, and here's the other precedent I can share with you, which we can revisit again later on when we're talking about maybe another one of these items, is that the adjoining property owner will typically always have first rate of refusal. There's thousands of cases of this in every county in the state of Minnesota. So I understand what Mr. Anderson is saying. And because I was privy to that information early on in the process, I would tend to agree with him. But at this point, I guess all we're really deciding is whether or not we're actually approving the vacation or making advisement to council to approve the vacation. And I'm supportive of this.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I don't have anything new to offer. It seems fairly cut and dry as far as bridge realignment goes. I have been running across that bridge multiple times a day and know where the project and I don't have anything new to add other than I'm supportive.
Mr. Erickson?
Well, from the motorist and the resident standpoint, it's certainly a tremendous improvement over what was there before. I certainly appreciate the efforts of the property owner and the county and the city staff and everyone working together to come up with a finished product that's top quality.
Did have one question for staff. And it's my understanding that this, the portion of land that we are proposing to vacate was never city land to begin with. This was county right-of-way for the old bridge?
True, yep, it was county right-of-way. But as definitely also discussed, when a county no longer needs land or has no longer use for like right-of-way land, it has to be deeded to the city to process that vacation or to conduct that vacation process.
Perfect.
Backs to Mr. Anderson's point, this is simple. It's a no-brainer to approve this and thank you for your patience.
Mark?
Yeah, it looks like it's an administrative change, pretty standard, so. I think I entertain the motion. I move to approve LA twenty-three dash two as applied.
Second. That's a, a motion by Commissioner McCutcheon. And we have a second by Erickson. Any more discussion? We'll put it to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Item number two, LA twenty-three dash eight. David Charles Designs thirteen forty buying place, request variance for average lake shore setback, seventy-five foot lake shore setback, hardcover within the seventy-five foot setback and rear yard setback. Ms. Nunn?
Good evening Commissioners. I'll be presenting thirteen forty buying place. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing home and rebuild on top of the existing foundation. The existing foundation is not conforming. Much of it is located in front of the seventy-five foot lake shore setback and in front of the average lake shore setback line. The existing home also does not meet the rear yard setback. The lot is substandard in size. It's about point six-six acres when the LR one view zoning district requires one acre. The lot is also currently just over the maximum hardcover of twenty-five percent. The proposed home will be larger than the existing home and taller as well. It will be approximately seven feet taller due to a steeper roof pitch. And there's also portions of the home that are currently one-story and a second story is being added. The current home has a detached two-car garage. The proposal is to demolish this and to build a three-car attached garage in a similar location. This would add approximately one hundred and fifty-five additional square feet of hardcover within the seventy-five foot setback. The last major difference for the new home is a new front porch addition. It, it stays in the same plane as the existing home due to the angle of the lot. It decreases the already non-conforming rear yard setback from twenty-four to twenty-one feet when thirty is required. In order for the applicant to construct the new home, they will need variances from lot area, average lake shore setback, seventy-five foot lake shore setback, hardcover within the seventy-five foot setback and rear yard setback. The applicant has identified the property location on the inside corner of an inlet bay as a practical difficulty. The location and substandard size of the property result in a very small building envelope that is not large enough for a single-family home to be constructed. The extreme setbacks due to the lot's shape, size and location are unique to the property. The applicant is choosing to build on top of an existing foundation to minimize the impacts to the surrounding neighbors. The project will also bring the lot into conformance with hardcover, bringing the total down to approximately twenty-three percent. The applicant has provided supporting documentation relating to the actual practical difficulties and can be asked for additional testimony if needed. Neighbor acknowledgement forms were included in the packet, but no other public comment has been received. Staff is supportive of this request and recommends approval of the requested variances due to the practical difficulties.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Aside from one-story areas becoming two stories and increased square footage in that regard, is there any expansion of the footprint beyond the existing foundation today?
Yes, that would be the garage area. I'll zoom in a little bit. But there is a garage there today. It's just, it's right here. It's detached. And they're proposing to demolish it and build a garage in a similar location but have it attached. So it's a slight increase in, in hardcover in that area, just over one hundred and fifty square feet. And they'll be reducing the overall site with hardcover.
Very good. Thank you.
Any more for staff? If the applicant is here and would like to speak, please approach your podium, state your name and ad, name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners. My name is David Swaber with David Charles Designs. Address one eight one nine zero Janovar Court, Lakeville, Minnesota. Here on behalf of my clients Ryan and Andrea Bedun. And Ms. Nunn did a, did an excellent job of outlining what we're looking to do on this rather difficult property because of its location on the inlet and in the fact that it is really sandwiched between two other properties on the inside corner of the bay. The existing setback rules make it nearly impossible to construct anything in conformance on this particular property. The existing property is, has kind of fallen into disrepair. And we feel the, the improvements with the new structure that we're going to be building there will make for a much better property, you know, bringing the hardcover down to within conforming levels from a percentage standpoint. Not, not adding a larger footprint per se, but simply stacking some square footage in a two-story fashion to pick up the additional area that the client is, is needing for their growing family. Attaching the garage also will be a much nicer improvement to the existing structure that's there. And because of the location of the neighboring properties, the neighbor to the northwest is significantly elevated over this property, is looking down upon the property currently. So we're not going to be blocking any views with this additional square footage that we're adding. And the property to the southeast is well to the southeast and really not in any view corridor. We're not blocking any views of their home to the lake right now. So I will stand for any questions that you may have. But again, I appreciate Ms. Nunn's great presentation and flexibility in working through these issues.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we can open up the public hearing. If anyone from the public would like to comment on this application, please approach your podium, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, bring it back up here for discussion and cause for public comment. Any discussion?
I think overall, I, I think practical difficulties are clearly established by staff as well as the applicant. I don't think that attaching them or was a detached garage to the construction, I don't think that's egregious. And I don't really have any issue with that. Overall, I don't, I don't see any concern with the project in my opinion.
Looks like a, a great addition of the property and getting the hardcover lowered overall is a good, it's a win-win.
I tend to agree.
I would entertain a motion if anyone has one.
Make a motion to approve LA twenty-three dash eight at one one four zero buying place as applied.
A second then?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Let's vote on it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That brings us to number three, LA twenty-three dash fourteen. Matthew Johnson, one zero zero seven Wildhurst Trail, request of variance from the average lake shore setback requirement for the placement of a new home on a vacant lot. Staff?
Thank you. This application is for the to-be-created blue lot. With an address to be assigned one zero zero seven Wildhurst Trail. The existing home at one zero zero three Wildhurst Trail on the lot that is red is, is planned to remain and that is not part of this application. The applicant is in the process of designing a new home for the blue lot at one near the seventy-five foot setback line as shown. The orientation of the adjacent lake shore property to the north at forty-four fifty-five, the top of the screen, West Branch Road results in the average lake shore setback line bisecting the center of the blue lot. They are requesting an average lake shore setback variance to allow construction up to the seventy-five foot setback. Approval of the proposed variance will be subject to Hennepin County accepting the proposed lot line rearrangement, which is in process and is planning to create the red and blue lot orientation. Planning Commission should treat the proposed blue lot as existing for the discussion. The applicants have identified the unique lake channel orientation for both the blue lot and the adjacent lake shore property on West Branch Road to the north, creating difficulties. They are in attendance this evening and should be asked for additional testimony regarding the practical difficulty. Staff agrees with the applicants that the unique orientation of the properties along the lake shore channels create an extreme average lake shore setback across the subject property, which is restricting development near the lake. Although the applicant's proposed location will likely not adversely impact views of the lake currently enjoyed by the owners of the West Branch property, it does not render the property unbuildable. There's a conforming building envelope on the property to support the applicant's proposed home footprint. The blue lot is situated at the end of a narrow channel off of the main lake. The surrounding properties also share this unique shoreline, although not the orientation. The neighboring home to the north fronts the lake via a different channel. The West Branch home is separated by approximately five hundred and fifty feet from the subject lot. From the proposed home location. Based on the location of the average lake shore setback line located in the home behind the average lake shore setback may impact the applicant's views of the lake significantly. Staff has received requests to view the plans and fielded some questions from the public regarding this application, but did not receive any formal comments. Tonight, the Plaid of the Commission should discuss whether or not the proposal fits within the character of the neighborhood, determine if the proposal is supported by practical difficulty considering there is a legal building envelope on the property, and discuss whether or not there is any lake view impact to consider on the northern property considering its distance from the proposed home. Staff recommends approval of the proposed variance for the average lake shore setback. Construction of the home up to the seventy-five foot setback should not impede the two neighboring properties' views of the lake. Approval of the variance should be contingent upon Hennepin County accepting the property line changes. That is all I have. I do have the other exhibits that were included in the packet if you'd like them on the screen, but I can try to answer questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
Just heard the green line is.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five. It's hard to know what references with the lake is in this white area, so.
Yep, it's based on the survey location. They just overlay, they just overlaid that, that line on the area photo for clarity.
So they're proposing to meet the seventy-five.
True.
But it's the average that we're looking for the variance for.
Correct.
Anyone else? Questions for staff? If the applicant is here and wishes to speak, please approach your podium, state your name and address for the record.
Commissioner, Plaid of the Commission, Matt Johnson, one zero zero three Wildhurst Trail, which would be the red lot indicated in there. If I could ask staff to provide, under my narrative, there's an illustration that I wanted to.
Yep, I'll bring that up.
Pay attention to. So a little history on this. This was, there's, there's currently three PIDs on this property. This is a large undeveloped chunk of land that I purchased. The neighbors had interest in reducing the density at one point in this, between these two parcels. And there was talk of putting seventy houses in there. But on this east side, which is outlined in the purple or blue, red, and then you have to help me with whatever color I put on there.
Red.
In the lower.
And the orange.
Orange.
Yeah.
So right now, it has three IP, PIDs. I could configure it this way. And the reason I included this illustration is you can see what the average lake shore setbacks would be for this site if I made it into three lots. You can see the white line coming across there, which ultimately is forward of the seventy-five foot setback or thereabouts. Or the yellow line, which is far ahead of the seventy-five foot setback. So in an effort to reduce the density of this area, my proposal was to bring it down to two lots. And then in doing so, the average lake shore setback gets connected from the property to the north and then connects to my own property that I also own. If we can slide that down a little bit more, thank you. And then it pushes that average lake shore setback. And so the average lake shore setback, you know, it's intent. This is not what it was intended to do. It was intended to ensure that there's a proper relationship with the lake and the neighbors. And I am that neighbor, first of all, because that's my property. And, but either way, it seems fitting that this would be, the seventy-five foot setback should be the reference point for the building on that lot.
Any questions, the applicant?
With the, where the white line is now tipped the same house that you're planning on building, could you, could we meet all variances? I mean, with all code, putting behind the white line?
Yes. Yep.
That's another question.
So I have a question for staff. Is that the top illustration, is that correct how it So I have a question for staff. Is that, the top illustration, is that correct how it's, how it's measured if there are two lots versus one? That would never have been applied that way.
Because the blue lot and this red lot are vacant, the average lake shore setback is a measurement based on the occupied neighboring lake shore lot. So I, I think so, I haven't measured that.
Wouldn't it be from the existing house, the closest house?
This, this, I can't.
In that configuration, the orange lot is not a lake shore lot, so it doesn't come into play.
And the neighbor to the east is not a lake shore lot, so it's two houses over that determine that, so you do that measurement.
Yeah, and that's another thing that is interesting to this site. So the orange lot there, but the next property to the east of that, that is not a lake shore lot. So it goes, even though they're right there, it's a real odd configuration. It's part of the hardship because the lake does a ninety-degree turn, but then cuts off that one property from being a lake shore lot, so it factors in on how the ALS is measured.
Any more questions for applicant or staff? If not, we'll open up the public hearing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone from the public who'd wish to speak on this, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back up here for discussion. Who would like to start?
I can, I think that this one, I don't recall the address, but this brings back similar memories in the last six months of the two or three lots that were being divided that had a tennis court, I think, on one of them. And it came down to the, well, if we build on this lot first instead of the one we're proposing to build on, then it shifts and it kind of was a game of, you know, which one gets built on first, or in this case, do you divide it into two or three lots and have to apply it that way? So the illustration provided by the applicant, I think, is very helpful because it does certainly show a different, different picture of what would be their two versus three lots, but in reality, we already have a two lot application, we're not three lots. So those are all things to consider, but I'd be curious to hear whether the commissioner speaks back on it.
Thank you. Anyone? I mean, I look at it, and that's kind of it, is that it's two lots instead of three. Those three, we'll be talking about this. And so it's kind of like, you look at it and that one house is extremely on the west side, and so since they're combining, it's considered lake shore lot. If they didn't do that, it wouldn't be a lake shore lot and they'd have no problem. So it's kind of like, where it's, where the proposed house would be, where it's located now, I guess, I think it makes a lot of sense. I don't think it's too far ahead, where it's too close. And I think, as you look at the neighborhood to the south, they're all about that distance from the lake. And so I think it kind of fits the character of the neighborhood.
Yeah, I think it goes back to what's the intent of that ordinance? Was it, and it is clearly to help with sightlines. And the proposed placement, I don't think, creates an issue with those sightlines.
I tend to agree.
Yeah.
I've actually been home to this area somewhat recently, looking at another property inside the hill, this area, very well, and it is, I guess I would say helping with it as I went there by the picture as well, so I don't even know that that property to the north, you know, in the summertime when the trees are all, I don't even know what the sightlines would be through those woods, to even see what this potential proposed house would be.
Yes, he could probably say some trees by putting the house more to the east than he would towards the west.
Anyone else? Mr. Libby?
I think the staff has done a really thorough job. I think they've given us a lot of good information. I think they've, a combination both between the applicant's care and diligence to make sure that we have a buildable envelope between staff and the applicant's efforts to try to position the house so that it does not obstruct any other lake views or natural views to any other neighbors. And then the distance, the five hundred foot separation, I'm in favor of this. I think that we still have a county to chime in on this yet because of the subdivision of the lot, but I'm in favor of this. I would tend to feel that I can approve it.
All that being said, would you like to make a motion?
I would make a motion.
Okay.
To approve LA twenty-three zero 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 one four.
I'll second that.
One zero seven Wildhurst.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Commissioner Libby and Commissioner Kramer. Any more discussion? Okay, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very none, motion passes. Item number four, LA twenty-three fifteen, Swanson Homes, three zero one seven North Shore Drive. Request for preliminary plat approval to create two lot subdivision in the LR one B zoning district. Ms. Oaken?
Yes, so in front of you tonight, an applicant is requesting a preliminary plat approval to subdivide three point five seven acres into two buildable lots. The applicant is proposing to subdivide three zero one seven North Shore Drive. There is currently one house on the property and the applicant is proposing to demo a portion of that existing house in order to meet the side yard setback requirements established by a new shared property line between lot one and lot two. The applicant has indicated that they will remove any existing encroachments, including that existing well, generally, where you see any patio associated with the existing home. Up on the screen in front of you, I have annotated lot one as a red lot and lot two as the green lot for reference. For the proposal, it is consistent with the competence of plan in the LR one B one-family lake shore residential zoning districts. Both lots will meet the one acre size and a hundred and forty foot width requirement in that zoning district. The proposed lots are, staff feels they are consistent with the character of the neighborhood and the proposed project does not trigger the requirements for our conservation design. All drainage and utility easements will meet current city standards and have been preliminary reviewed by the city engineer. The property is within the musa and it is served by city sewer and private well. The city engineer did note that separate sewer connections will be required for that new lot. Lot two is being referenced as the new lot. And the existing home has a well currently located in that proposed lot two and that will need to be addressed and separate wells will be required. Minnehaha Creek provided comment that a two lot subdivision does not trigger their permitting requirements, but they may require permitting at time of demo and of construction. Headman County also noted, has not submitted comments yet for this application. They did provide me with an update this morning noting that they are drafting a comment letter, but they have no major concerns regarding this application at this time. So that letter will be submitted and addressed before this goes to council. The applicant is proposing a shared driveway access off of North Shore Drive. Staff is noting that a driveway easement, easement and maintenance agreement should be required with this plat. Regarding a potential trail easement, the twenty forty parks map indicates an existing on-street, on-street trail along North Shore Drive. There is a twenty forty regional trail system, like a research corridor identified by the county along this North Shore Drive corridor abutting the property. Staff recommends a ten-foot easement should be obtained along North Shore Drive to support the creation of that potential regional trail corridor. Additionally, the parks and open space trail plan as part of the original competence of plan does not specify the need for a neighborhood park in this location. As there's no defined park need in this location, absent the need for parkland dedication, a park dedication fee in lieu of land would seem appropriate following city ordinance. No public comments have been received for this application at this time. So as a recommendation, staff recommends approval of this subdivision following the additional requirements before final plat, which would include a driveway easement and maintenance agreement, a ten-foot trailway easement along North Shore Drive. And then additionally, per city engineer, additional separate sewer connections and then demo permits would be required as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I believe the applicant is here and can speak to the project.
So to summarize, one lot becoming two, the current house is going to be modified so that it's conforming on the lot one?
Yep. Will you show the demo plan that I have in there? The shaded blue areas are the proposed areas to be demoed. There is a garage space on the street side of the house that will be demoed with a potential small addition in the future. And then there is some patio kind of space on the lake side of this house that the applicant is proposing to remove.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
This is weird. Okay. A lot of questions here, but I don't know how to articulate them. So it's just demoing the house to make another lot. It's in their right to do, I guess. It's the first one I've seen, I've been doing this for a while. Is there any, since we're having, one thing that we deal with a lot is irregular lots. This is, we can bring you back to our discussion, we talked about it, but when they're proposing this and working with staff, was there ever an attempt to try to make the lot lines square up with the lake?
There was discussion and you can, that would be a good question to propose to the applicant as to why they shaped it the way they did. There is a requirement that the lot width be at the OHW or the nine twenty-nine four contour, as well as the seventy-five foot setback contour is required for all lake lots. So I believe that's what you're seeing in the lake yard is the straight line. And then the applicant can speak to why they chose to design the new shared property line as they did.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions for staff? If the applicant's here and would like to speak, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Hello, everyone. My name is Blake Swanson. Thank you for your time tonight. I'm with Swanson Homes at thirteen sixty Hamilton Road in Medina. And in front of you here, this, the staff has done a great job of laying out for you his conforming plan. He spent a lot of time and effort thoughtfully designing, especially given into account the home that was built there, which we actually built in twenty eighteen, twenty seventeen timeframe. To answer Mr. McClatchen's question, the reason why the lot line goes around the home the way that it does is because that's right where the kitchen and the mudroom is. And so going straight line through there and also meeting the other requirements would be a substantial slice through a very critical part of the home. I guess backing up a little bit, like I said, we've been working very diligently with staff to try and come up with a plan that meets all of the requirements and everything of the ordinance. I think we've done so and is also like they mentioned earlier in the comments, it's consistent with a lot of the other properties along this stretch. I guess I have no other comments at this time, but is there any questions I can help answer?
Do you know the rough on lot two, the lot that will be created, do you know what the rough building envelope would be as far as footprint of a home that you could get on there within the, this setback's not requiring a variance or anything?
Yeah, so the building envelope, I forget, down to the foot, I think it's about approximately a hundred feet wide. Which again is pretty consistent with a lot of the others along that stretch.
And I see staff sitting in there who showed the setback, so thank you.
Any other questions for applicant?
Was there any discussion when you were, I'm sure you were working through a lot of scenarios, was there ever a thought of like shifting driveways? Did that ever come up or, like have the second lot actually have an easement to share that driveway?
They are, they are asking for that.
Oh, you are?
Yeah, that's part of the plan. And we did that because it was a county road, so we didn't, we thought it'd be better to have one access for safety than having two separate driveway access.
Anything else? We can open the public hearing if there's no more questions. If anyone from the public would like to comment on this application, please approach your podium, state your name and address for the record.
Our commissioners, my name is Catherine Callis and I live at thirty forty-eight North Shore Drive and the homeowner across the street. And I have clarifying questions as well based on this proposal. My first one is in relation to the property line being consistent with most properties that go parallel to each other versus a jig-jag happening in the property lines. In addition with how this is situated, that property line on the lakeshore runs about twenty-five percent in lot one's home. So if the homeowner put up trees, a fence, it would be in the view directly where the proposed kitchen, et cetera, is for the home on lot one. It also would be helpful to us in the neighborhood to be able to see what's being proposed on lot two to understand how is it going to be situated. Again, on these multimillion dollar homes, having this easement for one driveway going into the home, does that cause difficulties as well for the homeowners for this type of a home structure and the cost of these buildings? The other is that it's not clear to me on the application. It does state that, can I get to my notes, that James Blue is the owner and the address is W. Donnell Larson Trust. There is no one currently living in this home since it's been sold, nor is, nor was it intended to be a living home for someone per the neighborhood discussion. It was seen as a flip that would take place in the neighborhood. Those of us who live in the neighborhood enjoy this space, enjoy the size of the homes and the properties and how it's been configured over the years. And those are my questions that I would like the commission to think about in relation to this pre-planning before it is designed into two properties. Thank you for listening to me and I appreciate your clarification on that.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else from the public?
My name is Jeff Sislaw, thirteen eighty Breger Street. And I don't live nearby, but even after the demo, will the lot length of the existing house be reasonable? Or within the, I guess you'd know that, but it still seems like they're not cutting out a whole lot to keep the setback from the lot line between the two homes far enough from the existing house. How much of the house are they gonna, the whole thing seems a little strange to me, but that's just a question I had. I'll consider that a listen.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this one? Seeing none, we'll bring it back up here for discussion. I think maybe first of all, some of the questions resulted, maybe you could answer that. I think they're proposing a conforming setback.
Yep, let's see here. Do you want to go back to just the first image that we showed of the two lot lines? Yeah, and you went a little bit. The zoning district for this area is a ten-foot setback. So as proposed, they are removing enough of the garage and on the street side of the existing home and the patio on the lake side in order to meet that setback. So as they have applied it today, they are showing a conforming structure relating to setbacks. They are also conforming to, it will be conforming to hardcover and structural coverage as well. So the house will be a conforming structure after those demos happen if this preliminary plat were to be approved.
Thank you. Any discussion here from commissioners about the project and specifically about this wandering property line or any other points that you'd like to make on this one?
I guess, you know, what we see a lot coming here is we always talk about the building envelope. And so we're taking a lot and we're subdividing it and we're trying to think of the next steps where let's, we have another house that's proposing to be in this lot. And where are they going to put that house? And where are they going to put that house? And to me, it's just like, well, right in the middle of a lot, right where that number two is, is probably the most logical place for it. But I don't know what's now, it's probably in there, I'm sorry, my computer's kind of locking up. Do we have, is there a diagram that shows the building envelope that's possible on lot two?
So I can clarify a little bit. I did not annotate the building envelope. If you want to go back to that image, please. But the dotted line right set in sight of the green that's being highlighted right here are the conforming setbacks.
Okay, so it's.
So that whole area is considered the conforming envelope. The average lakeshore setback line is addressed on there. And just in front, outward of that is the seventy-five foot setback.
Okay, so then they only got to be ten feet. So that's, they actually do have, that's probably, I don't know, the math, that's probably at least a hundred and thirty feet wide.
I believe the applicant noted around a hundred foot width roughly. Yep, and I believe also I have an aerial image in the presentation folder that might show a higher level of the neighborhood. So the property we're talking about right there is on the channel. And then you can see the neighboring properties kind of surrounding as well for kind of a comparison. And the yellow lines, the light yellow lines are estimated property lines.
Yeah, and just, just for speaking topics here for the commission, you know, the obvious is came to us from fresh. If it's big lot, when they start about it, we would not subdivide it that way. I said to them, we just cut it in half, right, or something like that. But I guess it's in the year to one acre minimum, so it is conforming. And they're going to demo the existing house to make sure it's conforming. And so I guess that's where we'll have to, have to see if there's any concerns with the shade. My biggest thing is the shade lot, I think, and I think there's enough to, having the driveway, I think that's a smart way to have the easement there because that, obviously for safety reasons and just to kind of allow the new homeowner of lot two more options when they're, when they're building their home. And so it'll fit the character of the neighborhood a little bit better. So those are my thoughts. I'm just struggling with, and if you look, and if you're looking at this point of view, you're kind of biased and go, well, it doesn't really make sense. But if you look at the zoomed out of the neighborhood, well, then the other lots are, you know, you can see that that ten-foot setback, their houses are pretty, pretty close together. So, I don't know, those are my thoughts when I first looked at it. I don't know if that helps or hurts anything, but.
I think that was my concern as well. That's why I asked what the building envelope would be. And I, you know, we don't have a house floor plan in front of us here. People look at the foundation size, but I feel like a hundred feet is adequate for that. I, I always struggle to consider denying something like this when someone is asking to develop land in a conforming manner. All of what they're looking to do is conforming to our existing ordinances and things like that as far as lot area and width and things like that. So I would struggle to tell people they can't develop land in the manner in which it's, it's going to be developed. I did also note too in the packet that the lot directly to the west of this one is point six one of an acre. So this, you know, would not be the smallest lot in the area. And we kind of set the character of the neighborhood ranging in kind of the look of the sizes of old block lots in the area.
I think it's a thoughtful subdivision. I like the fact that they are doing the common driveway for safety and aesthetics. I think it fits the character of the neighborhood. And it's definitely not a straight property line, but there's a lot of crooked property lines in Orno. You know, you can see why this one's required, so I'll definitely be for this.
Commissioner, would you?
I, I think the staff's suggestion about having a shared driveway requiring some sort of a maintenance agreement or something that would be prudent moving forward because we know as history moves by, the first people that build or buy and live in this house might not have the same sentiments as the next owner. And if there's something that's uniform and accepted that's needed, I think that eliminates a lot of potential problems in future. I've had a number of circumstances where I've been involved in sales where they've been shared driveways. And sometimes driveways themselves kind of move somewhere else. Twenty-five years later, everybody's trying to remember where the driveway really was. But I think with a maintenance agreement and something attached to the property within its permanent structure, because this twenty forty plan guides this for one acre. So we're, we're beyond that on the first sight. I would tend to be in favor of this.
Thank you. Yeah, I would just note that on that, along that same stretch of road, there are other shared driveway situations, which I think do make sense when you're on a county road like that. Overall, I'm in, I'm in favor of it. I mean, it's, it's meeting all the check marks for what the code requires for a subdivision. So I didn't take a motion if there's no further discussion.
I'd make the motion to approve LA twenty-three dash zero 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 one five at three zero one seven North Shore Drive with the stipulation that a driveway and driveway maintenance easement be included, trail easement, drainage and utility easement, and additional sewer connection as noted by city staff in the recommendation as applied.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
With a second by Commissioner Erickson. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And none, motion passes. That moves us to number five, LA twenty-three dash sixteen Carolina Canno on behalf of Kishaw Properties LLC. Twenty-one sixty Uizeville Boulevard West requests for a conditional use permit for a class two restaurant within the B one district. Ms. Knight?
Evening again. The applicant is proposing to open a new restaurant at twenty-one sixty Uizeville Boulevard West. The existing building is a multi-tenant building with a variety of uses, including a gas station, salon, laundromat, groomer, and professional offices. The applicant is proposing to take over two vacant spaces and remodel the interior to support a restaurant. The proposed restaurant is a Mexican restaurant that proposes to serve liquor, which classifies this restaurant as a class two restaurant for the city code. Class two restaurants are a conditional use in the B one zoning district. The proposed restaurant is approximately seventeen hundred square feet with about nine hundred square feet of public space. The proposed hours are eleven AM to ten PM, Monday through Sunday. No exterior modifications are proposed at this time. The business will be able to obtain a sign permit as long as they meet the city sign code. The multi-tenant building has a shared parking lot. The proposed business has allocated seventeen parking spaces, some of which are in the front of the building and some in the rear. Eleven parking spaces are required per the amount of public space in the building, in the tenant space. Six of the parking spaces in the rear are not striked, but are intended to be used for overflow or employee parking. Staff recommends that these parking spaces are striked as well. Planning Commission can discuss that. The applicant is proposing to use or to rent their own garbage and recycling dumpsters. That will be stored next to the other recycling and garbage dumpsters for the other tenants of the building. The city code requires that these containers are closed, but we do not require necessarily having a traction closure. Staff also recommends the planning commission discuss the possibility of adding a condition of a traction closure if the garbage area ever becomes a nuisance or an issue. Again, that's something the commission can discuss. Staff overall finds that the proposed restaurant means all applicable conditional use permit regulations. The use is compatible with the surrounding area and is appropriate for the district and for the future land use for this site. The applicant is here and available for additional information or to answer questions. The business narrative, work plan and parking plan were in your packet, but I can also bring them up on screen. Staff recommends approval of the requested conditional use permit subject to the possible condition to strike the parking lot.
Quick question. I didn't see it in the packet, but the location of the restaurant and how it relates to those parking spots?
I believe it's, and the applicant can speak probably matter to that because they are taking over two spaces. So I don't want to miss that.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, if the applicant is here and wishes to speak, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, council members. My name is Gustavo Cano Gattmica and the address is nine eighty-five Oldham Lake Road. To answer your question, the reason why we occupy the spaces that are available is that we are planning on taking those two available leases and it will be more optimal.
Thank you.
And I would also like to introduce ourselves. So unfortunately, the, my sister, which is Carolina Canno, was unfortunately not able to be here. She got COVID, but I'm able to fill in her spot. We are a family of seven. We've lived in Orno for over twenty years. So we have that sense of community as well as that sense of family hospitality and as well as having a family operated restaurant. And we would just like to say that thank you for listening and also have more. We, we plan on building a strong network within our families and our friends. And we also have business partners that are strictly based in Wisconsin. So they're not really participating in anything besides just being like a shareholder. We really want to place emphasis on family operated. I know the majority of the businesses and owner in Orno are like Subway, Domino's. They're mainly fast food places. And we intend to make a Mexican cuisine and a memorable dining experience. The, to better understand like our business or what we're trying to propose, it is Talvera, so it comes from the fourteen hundred century Spanish queen Talvera in Providence of Spain, who was brought to Mexico and used of decorations, which is how we plan on going. So that is a bright, milky, glossy finish and it tends to be colorful as well. We plan on doing the operating hours between eleven AM and ten PM. So if you guys are wondering like how does that interfere with any of the business? We tend on having peak hours at seven PM, which by then most of the other operating businesses around us are closed. And we estimate to have around twelve employees with the employees carpooling. So to minimize the amount of parking spaces. Another thing that we would like to take into account that we're accommodating for is the parking spaces. We fully understand that some of the parking spaces are not fully striped. So we're communicating with the lease org to see how we can overcome this little problem that we have, whether that be we pay or it comes out of a lease, et cetera. And I would just like to thank you guys for your time and to hear our proposal.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
I do have a question, if you'd mind. This perhaps is more falls on the responsibility of the landlord, but I cannot see from the illustrations that we have, I can't count how many other abled or handicapped parking spots there are. Do you have any idea?
There's one proposed from, from the ones that they have designated for their use, there is one ADA space. As far as the entire parking lot, I see a view just from the aerial, but I'm not sure if you know the exact town.
No, I didn't expect that you would. I thought maybe that'd be a question for the landlord. But with one space with seventeen hundred square feet, the number of people I can see are there, are we in, are would they, would they be in compliance with ADA?
That is a review done by our building official.
It is, okay.
Yep, so they're anticipating one through their business plan right now. If more are needed or desired, that can be addressed through, through our building official at time of permitting. But if that's also, it would be mindful maybe to make that a condition to ensure that it's addressed as part of this conditional use permit.
You put it well, because my thought was that to try to ask you for other abled and disabled people to have a generous amount of handicap parking. And I like the idea of the striping because you are going to be serving alcohol. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any questions? Okay, let's open up the public hearing. Thank you. Anyone from the public who's here which to speak on this, please approach the podium.
Reggie Anderson, been in Orno Rizmin for a long time. I don't have a dog in this fight, but I just want to talk to the character of these folks that are running this gas station. It's a local gas station, first class, great food already. And I just, they're just solid citizens. And if you don't use their place, you should.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll bring it back up here for discussion. Who would like to start? I can, I'll, I'll start. Looking at the parking seems to be maybe the big kind of question here. And I'm assuming the seventeen dedicated spots, they're, they're allowed to use the overflow spots for the businesses. I'm guessing there's no other dedicated spots per se and maybe?
No, and, and I think there's an over, it's a shared parking lot. So I think they're just trying to show that this is minimally what they'll have. But as he mentioned, the hours of the other businesses really complement each other. So staff really isn't worried about the amount of parking that they're proposing just because there's the use of all the entire parking lot.
Right. And overall, I'm in favor of it. I think it looks like a good proposal and I don't see any issues. But I'd like to hear from the other commissioners.
I don't see the issues with the. I don't think we should make it too easy. I think we should sweat because we get a sister man on. I think it's a, a business friendly town, so this is great. I can't wait. I wish you guys the best of luck. I, I think you're right, pointing out the, the parking spots, you know, with the different types of businesses. I, I think they can make it work. And if it gets too successful, they can always, you know, find some other solutions. But, you know, they'll put the cart for the horse, I guess. But otherwise, I'm in favor of it.
Any more discussion or?
Yeah, I'd like, this is an excellent application. I'm supportive of it. There is one detail that was mentioned in the staff report, which I would like to emphasize. And that is the question that was raised, should the dumpsters be enclosed? Should enclosures be made and hide those? And I'd like to give a little history to decide how, as a owner of commercial property in this corridor in Long Lake. But this is an area where Long Lake is on one side of the road and Orno is on the other side of the road. And most people driving by have no idea, you know, where the line is or anything. But I think it was, and I served on the Long Lake Planning Commission for five years before I started here. But I think, and my memory's a little rusty on this exact point, but Long Lake started requiring dumpster enclosures, I think in the early nineteen nineties, if I'm not mistaken. And which required some adjustment from some of the, a lot of the property owners had been living without them for quite a while before that. But, so compliance was, did not happen overnight. But, and then part of that effort to gain compliance resulted in the Long Lake Planning Commission got together on the Saturday afternoon and did a walking tour of the entire retail and industrial neighborhood and, and took notes as to who had enclosures and who didn't. And, but then since that time, of course, it's gotten, gotten to be accepted over a period of time. And one excellent example of that is across the road. Carbonic Pizza was just a few years ago, had been a printing shop. They converted it into the restaurant and as part of that process, they. And as part of that process, they built a brand new dumpster enclosure at the rear of the building. And uh, it, it's uh, I think should be a model as to uh, what we should be looking for uh, in, in this or other restaurant locations. They've got uh, the recycling bin, the regular garbage. That part of it is twenty-four by ten, okay? And then they've got another portion next to it is probably about ten by ten. And I'm not sure what it is, but it, it might be the part that where they put the oil from the cooking and so on. I'm not sure. But uh, I, I feel that that should be uh, part of the requirement for uh, not just this location, but any other restaurants that come up.
I think that's interesting feedback. I'll, I'll piggyback off of something you just said at the end there, not just this restaurant, but any restaurant. I think that's where I struggle to look at this application and try and apply enclosure when we have other existing businesses, uh, restaurant businesses within our city. And that would be a broader discussion for potential ordinance review or something like that, rather than trying to apply to a long-sitting application. But that's just kind of my opinion.
Thanks for those comments. I do think as a CUP, we have the ability to require it. I'm kind of, I'm glad you guys brought up the dumpster stuff because I was actually liking the way staff proposed it. I see a lot of times when they're forced to put dumpster enclosure in, especially in the winter, those dumpsters sit outside of the enclosure because they can't open the gates to the enclosure. And sometimes it can actually be a nuisance. So I guess I would be in support of seeing if it becomes a nuisance first and then requiring maybe later, but I, that's my opinion. Any other discussion? I'd, uh, if anyone has a motion? I'd entertain one.
See, I, I'm in favor for it. I think that's great discussion with, with the trash, but I, but I agree. Let's uh, walk before we run. I will uh, put a motion to approve LA twenty-three dash sixteen as applied.
Second?
Let's have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That brings us to item six, LA twenty-three dash seventeen. Murphy and Company Designs, seven forty-six Tonka Road, request variance for hardcover driveway width and rear yard setback from accessory building. This night.
All right. The applicant is proposing to renovate the existing home at seven forty-six Tonka Road. The property currently contains a detached non-conforming garage near the home. The applicant is proposing to demolish that. The applicant is proposing to construct a new three-car garage near the street. Because the proposed garage has garage, has its garage doors facing the street, the set effect requirements increased from ten feet, that would be for distant uh, and regular accessory structure, to thirty feet due to the garage doors facing the street. The proposed garage is ten feet from the rear property line. Due to the proximity of the garage, the driveway does not have an opportunity, opportunity to taper down to the maximum allowed width of twenty feet. The applicant is requesting variances for rear yard setback for the accessory building, um, from thirty feet down to ten feet. And uh, an additional variance for driveway width to allow a thirty-four foot driveway width where a twenty foot is required. Or is, twenty foot is the maximum. Additionally, the applicant is requesting a variance from overall hardcover. The current property is overly allowed maximum hardcover at approximately thirty-five percent. The applicant is proposing to remove hardcover primarily through removal of the existing driveway to bring the total down to thirty-two percent. Um, because the total hardcover is still over twenty-five percent, a variance is needed. The applicant has identified, has identified the significant topographical changes on the property as a practical difficulty. There is a steep grade change from the street to the house, and the current driveway is unsafe, especially in the winter months. Constructing a new detached garage closer to the street alleviates those issues. Staff is in agreement with the listed practical difficulties and is supportive of the overall hardcover reduction. Staff recommends approval, however, would like the planning commission to discuss the need uh, for a three-bay garage versus a two-bay detached garage. A two-bay garage could further reduce hardcover and reduce the requested variance in driveway width. Uh, the applicant is available uh, to answer questions and uh, we have not received any public comment. Staff recommends approval of the requested variance.
Any questions for staff? Seeing none, if the applicants here wish to discuss, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Uh, David Newell, with Murphy &amp; Co Design, two degree five Lake Street East, closeout of Minnesota, apartment three nine one. Uh, I'll keep my comments here brief, but the goal of the plan is just really to keep the house in its existing location and using the foundation and um, the main floor system, and we add a new story to create enough bedrooms for the family. Uh, but with that, the existing garage is closer to the house and is allowed that current code. And as staff mentioned, there's a very steep driveway to get there. And you kind of come out of the driveway right onto the coming road, coming up a free steep incline, so we're trying to alleviate that and make it safer for the homeowners. Pushing the garage towards the front of the lot, it naturally drops about eight and a half feet from where the front of the garage is down to the back of the garage. So we're occupying that existing location on the property. Um, and it's letting you know along this whole stretch of road, there's lots of precedent for garages right up against the street. You know, even just the one immediately to the south here is even closer. Um, so we're trying to navigate that and then speak to the parrot, to the driveway width comments. Um, currently, it's a little hard to see here that there is the driveway that gets down to the current garage. And then there's also a spur off the top that it provides additional parking for the property, which results in a total width of like twenty-four for the existing section on the north and then twenty-seven for kind of the spur for the additional parking. So we're proposing to reduce that and just use the thirty-four um, for the garage for this property. That would be coming straight out in the, in the lighter pink there. Other than that, uh, like staff said, we are trying to reduce hardcover as much as possible. There is a lot of paving on the property right now, so we're reducing that and replacing with green space.
Thank you. Any questions? Question, let me?
Can you do discussion with your immediate adjoining neighbors about these changes?
Our client has been in contact with them. My understanding is that they are both out of town for the winter and do not winter gear and were not comfortable signing any support of it until they were able to see the property in person this morning.
Okay. Answer any questions?
Any other questions? Um, if not, let's uh, open up the public hearing. If anyone's here to speak on this, please approach the podium. State your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Bruce Lee. I, we own, my, my, my own the property to the north of this. We have a shared driveway easement, uh, that would be completely uh, encroached upon if this uh, retaining wall goes up the way it's proposed. If you look, if you can see where there's a retaining wall, it's a uh, north westerly angle, if you want to point it out. I believe the easement goes from that corner point, which is a retaining uh, wall, a foot high, into fifteen feet and all the way up to the road. And it's a mutually shared easement. Uh, so it looks like we still would have access to my property, however, we back out of my garage, we back into that um, northerly easterly portion of that easement. So we are going to be greatly affected by a wide garage and a retaining wall that chews up probably two-thirds of that easement. I did know about the meeting tonight. I sent you guys all an email stating kind of the same things I'm talking about now. So my apologies for the late, but uh, nobody's talked to me about this. The neighbors didn't call me. Um, I literally found out about it about thirty minutes ago, so I'm a little out of pocket.
So, your property is seven forty-six Tonka?
Seven forty.
Seven forty.
In the north. So we have a shared driveway easement. Uh, and it does come down on this steep angle and a lot of that top angles is the only way to get to my property. I don't have, I don't have any access because of that eight-foot drop directly into my driveway.
Thank you.
Oh, maybe before you sit down, oh, wait, you go ahead.
I just wanted to mention that I did get your message.
Oh, thank you.
And that prompted me to ask the question of the hour.
Yeah, I, I did not get any.
I'm not taking sides.
Yep, oh, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I mean, is the, so is there any changes, and this drawing is a little bit complicated, is there any changes to the existing driveway? For the drawing?
There's an existing driveway here that's going to be removed.
Yeah, so a good portion of the easement is going to be gone and that is backing out space from my garage to back around and then get up the driveway. And especially in the winter time, it's pretty important to have kind of a run at it because of that steep angle.
Yeah, and just because you lived there uh, for a period of time, uh, I imagine snow removal, you definitely leverage that as well.
Uh, I've actually paved all the snow removal, um, over the years. We've owned it for twenty years. Um, but we've always pushed the snow on my property. So we, I would.
Going to your work property?
Yes.
Okay. So ultimately, the way this is proposed, your, your driveway is getting smaller, the shared driveway?
Uh, a lot smaller, I guess, well.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Officer and Weathers, I live at seven fifty Tonka, so the property to the south. Uh, we've got no issues with it. We've not talked to them, but um, looks like it's conforming from our point of view and we don't have any issues.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the, seeing none, we'll close the public comment, bring it back up here for discussion. I can start, but I guess I'd like to address the, the comment about the easement there and I guess seeing the aerial, um, that is the only access to the neighboring property, is what appears to be. Is that, has there been any analysis done on this by staff at all with this easement and?
Uh, we weren't aware that it would, because we saw that there was still access to their property. Um, we thought it was adequate access. Uh, we always recommend that the applicant reaches out to the neighboring properties and we hadn't received any comment. Um, so we're learning about it at the same time you are that there, it will impact their turnaround.
Okay.
There is, um, in the agenda packet, there is uh, documents submitted by the applicant that would believe that's got a drunk or a car and a driveway in the house and the proposal law and things like that. And there is a driveway easement that's called out that if I'm reading correctly, has arrows pointing to that and uh, kind of shows where, as from understanding correctly, that's accurate, that you know, where the, you have one there on the, the top left corner there, where the asphalt driveway is up right there. If you zoom in, right uh, on that top left corner there, right there where your mall was, says driveway easement right there and then arrows pointing to left and down to the right.
Right, Weathers, they're removing this part right here.
So, I guess my reaction, not having all the details of what that easement is and everything else, um, maybe it's just cleared from multiple people and this document that appears there's an easement there and I, I was struggling to support something that would encroach upon an easement that uh, is a governing document to different parcels and not something that we're a party to.
Can I read one more time?
Where's it?
Not open to the public anymore?
Yeah, we closed the public hearing, um. It, I, come, go ahead, come on, come on up.
My name's Todd, I'm a keen and a slaver. Uh, we're landscape architects and contractors on the project. It was my, there is a, also a line kind of, I think buried right under that proposed edge of driveway line that we're showing there that was shown, drawn at an angle. So it was my assumption that that was kind of the edge of the easement, so we, we collect the driveway right to that point and still allow, I think it's a fourteen-foot wide driveway entrance point there, which felt like it was adequate. If there needs to be additional pavement left in that lower right-hand corner of the easement area there for backout space, which we didn't, I guess, take into account, or it was hard to study because we don't know the, exactly where the neighbor's garage is, we could certainly look at doing that. If that's the issue, it's being able to kind of back into that space to get out.
Um, yeah, hearing from the neighbor, it seems like that might be one of the issues. Did, the way it sits today, is the entire easement asphalt? Or?
Uh, I don't know if you have the existing.
Here's an air rail. I don't have any existing.
A lot of the asphalt that's there is, my assumption was, was to get the, the previous property owner into their house, right? Cause that, they're attached, or their detached garage, which is very close to the house down there. Most of that pavement looked like it was intended to get people down to the garage. So it was in terms of backout space to the neighbor, um, it looked to me like they would have had enough space to back out and pull out, back out onto the road going forward, but you know, we're open to suggestions that may get workable for both parties.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm, you know, I think we drive by this a lot. At least I do. And the parking in this whole, this whole street is an issue, especially with the elevation drops. You have some garages right on top. And then this one here, we have the bottom, so it's a real delicate puzzle piece for neighbor to neighbor about um, getting access to their house safely. Um, one thing I'm looking at it and probably not enough, not enough real estate on top before it drops. It's like you almost, if you could rotate that garage ninety degrees so that instead of backing out the street, you kind of back into the other neighbor's driveway. I don't know if that was ever a consideration when drawing it. I don't know if there's enough room, but did you follow? You felt like, you can point it forward, this one's complicated, so I think you guys have to come back and forth here. But do you have enough space to do that or was that considered?
Yeah, well, it's considered, um, again, there's a lot of grade change there, so what we would have had to do is push the garage to the north side and use the high grade going to that south property. And it would have made the garage kind of extend almost to where that existing garage is. And we felt like that would just be a really big impediment on the neighboring property because you have two full stories of garage there.
And you'd be in there easement?
And you'd be.
Not to interrupt, but?
You'd be in there easement or right on there easement.
Okay.
Just keeping it up towards the road keeps the massing with the grade and keeps the impacts on the neighbors minimized.
Okay.
And the goal is to try to create a little more green space outside, but.
Yeah, I was just looking at any knobs or levers we can find, like we'd almost, as a commission, um, sacrifice hardcover for safety. Like if this somewhere where it won't, you could turn and there's a bunch of wind and the neighbors, because it's a shared driveway, so you think of the hardcover there as like, well, the calculation's there, but it's really being shared between two neighbors. And from a safety point of view, you know, there's always these trade-offs, but I was just curious if, but it sounds like even if you did rotate it, there's still not enough space to do it.
Yep, and that's actually what I was showing the driver, the car here, because we were talking to staff and felt like it was important to show we could turn a car around without being on the public road, right? So that's what that car is showing.
Sorry? Thank you. Any more discussion up here? And maybe, maybe it'd be helpful if we break this down into pieces. This type of garage, because it's loading facing the street, is requiring a thirty-foot setback, but they're proposing a.
Ten foot.
Ten-foot setback. But looking at the contours of this lot, this seems like a logical place to put that garage. But I do not like the idea that we're affecting the neighbors' safety and turnaround ability. So if it's an easy change to keep that asphalt the way it was or almost the way it was, I could be supportive of that. How, how does, I'd like to hear how the other commissioners feel about this type of garage with a ten-foot setback versus a thirty.
as far as the safety goes for backing out onto the road. And again, we're seeing a passenger vehicle and we're not seeing a truck or a UPS vehicle or anything like that on this.
That was exactly what I was just gonna say, is that it works fine assuming that these clients own three passenger cars and that no one ever buys the house with three pickup trucks or SUVs, I guess, um, so there is some of that concern. I don't know how maybe, you know, a delivery truck can just kind of pull in parallel across the paper driveway area there and then pull back out onto the road in that manner and then, you know, turn it at a ninety, um. But that was my concern as well, is it appears a passenger vehicle can be turned around, but like a larger vehicle, and does someone ever change vehicles or sells a home and the homeowner has a larger vehicle?
Anyone else in comments? Commissioner Libby?
I just feel that staff has given some guidance in the empirical verse of chapter of, uh, section seventy-eight dash one, one six eight one, at the end of their paragraph where it makes it quite evident that, uh, if there's a twenty-foot width is permitted that the existing property has an existing shared driveway with the neighbor that will partially need to remain. The partially means to remain seems to be the technical question because being able to support one practical difficulty to create another one doesn't seem to be a constructive way of getting to an answer. So I think that because the point was made when the applicant had an opportunity to speak, that they, um, weren't able to reach the adjoining property owner with the easement, we don't know yet, uh, did you find a file easement, was there actually a an easement director?
I don't talk to them.
There, there might be something like that, but I think that, uh, all of us being neighborlies, and neighbors in trying to be neighborly, I think that there is room for discussion between the principals and their design engineers and the adjoining neighbor so that something could be brought back to us that would look, uh, representative of satisfying the needs of both parties. That would be my sort of moderate method of, uh, making a suggestion. I'm not sure how we would address that because we have an applicant before us, you know, we've been asked to make a decision. I think it's preemptive. I don't think there's enough meat in the matter yet, that there needs to be more discussion of the adjoining property owners who've never even discussed this to see what would work for both of them. It's not just an engineering question and answer.
Right. Thank you. Yeah, I, I tend to agree with you, um. If I'm looking at the application, the hard cover to me, I, I'm just kind of breaking it down so we can give some direction here. I feel like the hard cover and maybe the consensus up here is that that's not the issue. Um, the driveway width is clearly not the issue because we're kind of saying that almost should be wider so we can help accommodate for this. And the rear yard setback, that's essentially this type of garage being this close to the, to the road, um. Again, I don't, I mean, I feel like they're demonstrating here that that could work. I, I guess I'd like to see it work better, so, um. Any commissioners on that rear yard setback piece, specifically on that, if anyone is this type of garage with a ten-foot setback?
No, I think, being familiar with the area, I think the garage on top makes sense, just trying to make it work, I mean, maybe we should provide a little bit of feedback because we're gonna, not only the easement issue they gotta get through, uh, but what about the three stall, because it's a hard cover um, situation here, but to me, it's since you're sharing hard cover with the neighbor of the driveway and there's a safety concern that, um, a little, if they can make it work to satisfy the neighbor's easement and concerns that come out there on the property, do we have enough data in front of us to give guidance on a three-car garage versus a two-car garage? Or do we really need that driveway piece figured out before we even go there, kind of Commissioner Libby's point?
Does a two-car versus three-car impact much of, I think, what Commissioner Bolus was asking, it's kind of the proximity of this road, right? And so if it's changed to two cars, not theoretically, it's not gonna change the orientation because the applicant had mentioned that, you know, this is the most practical way to do it with the grade and stuff. So if you change it to two cars, not theoretically, I don't see it reducing, or I, I don't see it getting any further away from the road, right?
Yeah, my concern there is hard cover. It's more of a practicality of, if you have a three-car garage, the odds are you're gonna have less chance of a car being in front of the two-car garage because your garage is full of, you know, lawnmowers and all that kind of stuff, so. You know, just trying to be practical with it, but I know, I know there's a lot of, a lot of constraints here, but if we just, well, what's, what's the hard cover, the hard cover's better, right, with this plan?
Well, it goes from about thirty-five to thirty-two, approximately.
And that's what the proposed garage?
Yes.
Yeah, I guess, to me, I'm, the easement aside, uh, with the driveway, I guess, um, the size of that garage, I would be in favor of. If that helps with the feedback of, of the next steps.
Yeah, I'll comment on the three-car, I think the three-car is fine, um, so I guess, looking at the application, I'm looking at it in pieces and the piece that's missing to me is that easement piece with the neighbor. So I'm not in favor of it, um, the way it's presented, but if, um, anyone wants to put together a motion, I'd entertain a motion at this point and maybe we can give some guidance on it as well.
Maybe just because not everybody goes to these meetings, luckily, um, if we deny it, it gives you an opportunity to any last minute, change to the forecoast of council, so if you were to get an agreement with, uh, alignment with the neighbor and work a, a solution, it can be presented to council and then they go from there. So sometimes a denial is okay because it gives these, uh, it will go to council and, uh, they can, they can vote on it as well. Just to kind of show us what procedures.
Um, my perspective on that, if we deny it, and they make changes, it goes straight to council, we don't get to comment on the new plan. So I'd be in favor of a, a motion to table, so they can work this out with the neighbor and then present us with something so we can comment on it again.
I would second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Second. Okay, um, so we have a motion by, well, Commissioner Libby, is that a motion or a second? Just to clarify.
Mine was the second.
Mine was the second, mine was kind of a partial motion, so, um, yeah, I would move to table LA twenty-three dash seventeen as applied and we have a formal second for that?
We have a formal second.
Motion and second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, um, so LA twenty-three dash seventeen is tabled. Thank you. That brings us to number seven, LA twenty-three dash nineteen, AS Designs nineteen forty, Shadywood Road. Request a lot area variance seventy-five foot setback variance for hard cover in, in building. Average lake shore setback and side yard setback variance in order to construct a new home on existing foundation with expansions. Ms. Curtis.
Thank you. This property is situated along the, um, Covey Channel and is completely within the seventy-five-foot lake setback. Uh, the applicant is requesting variances in order to construct a new home on the existing foundation with a full two-story design. The new home is proposed to be, um, as close as two-point-seven feet from the side lot line where the existing home is where a seven-and-a-half foot setback is required. Home is entirely within the seventy-five foot setback and is fourteen, oh, excuse me, one-point-four feet length of the average lake shore setback line. Variances for side yard, average lake shore setback, seventy-five foot setback as well as lot width. Overall site hard cover and hard cover within the seventy-five foot setback are included in this application. The applicant has identified the existing home location, the lot's orientation to the channel. Its small size and mature oak and maple trees near the channel is practical difficulty supporting their request of variances. Um, regarding practical difficulty, staff finds that there are several challenging issues on the site. The lot's narrowness and location along the channel result in no building envelope for conforming development. Small lot size and the owner's desire to preserve the mature trees along the channel also create development obstacles. Put the aerial photo up quickly, just a little bit more illustrated, illustrated of the lot. Um, the, um, area of the lot is non-conforming. The request for variances, additional variances results in the property's inability to conform to the lot of record administrative approval standards. Therefore, a lot area variance is also required in order to develop the law, the, of the property. Um, the ability to develop the property consistent with other existing developed properties in the neighborhood would be limited if the area variance was not granted. Um, there is a small three-hundred-and-thirty square foot triangle in the northwest corner of the property located outside of the seventy-five foot setback. However, it is not buildable as it is within both the side and rear yards. Uh, the applicant is proposing to build the home on the existing foundation as they find this to be the most suitable location to build. According to the volume comparison exhibits, the applicant is proposing to increase the height of the home by approximately seven-and-a-half feet overall. I can put that on the screen in a moment. They're proposing to add, um, a new ninety-nine square foot sidewalk as part of this plan, the only, um, new hard cover. This would increase the hard cover from the site from twenty-seven-point-nine percent to twenty-eight-point-nine percent. We do require, um, a two-foot minimum sidewalk from the driveway to the front door accessing the home. I think that is what they are trying to accomplish there. Um, all of the hard cover within the, with the exception of the ninety square foot portion of the driveway is within the seventy-five foot setback. Um, we have received comments, um, one was included in your packet and another new comment was provided today by another neighbor across the channel. Staff recommends the planning commission discuss the setback for the second story proposed within the two-point-seven foot, um, area of the neighboring property line. Is it reasonable to permit further expansion of the volume for a second story so close to the property line? Uh, is it reasonable to require the second story to be pushed slightly to the south in order to align with the majority of the home set five-and-a-half feet from the property line? Is it possible with the, um, with the, um, structural architecture of the home? Um, and some replanning staff recommends approval of the variances to construct, um, this new home on the existing foundation. That is, um, my presentation, the applicant is here. I have the exhibits from the packet if you'd like to see them, I'm going to just put the volume comparison up for a moment while you continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? If the applicant's here and wishes to speak, please approach the podium, state your name and address for record.
Okay, you and commissioners, thank you for the statement. My name's William Mullin. My address is nineteen forty, Shadywood, four oh five five three nine one. And I'm here to answer any questions you might have. Again, appreciate this opportunity.
Any questions for the applicant?
I have one question. Uh, we did receive a note from the adjoining property owner about the conwood trees. You may not be aware of any comfort or review of those, but the concern on the, uh, citizens message that they sent to us is that disruption of the, the trees with root network could have caused the demise of the tree, which is not uncommon with, uh, legacy growth trees like this. Apparently they're about fifty feet tall, in fact, I can attest to that because I've gone through that channel so many times that I've seen them for many, many years. I have good friends that owned that house for almost a decade and a half, so, uh, I'm very familiar with. Have you had an arborist or anyone come out that would show some concern and analyze whether your project would, would destroy the root network and possibly cause the demise of these giant conwood trees?
The people that we've had out to give us professional opinions as far as the construction and so forth, each of them has said if we move the house any further, that that would impact the root structure and that could have a catastrophic effect on the trees. The trees are about forty-eight inches in diameter, one's forty-eight inches in diameter and the other one was also sizable, probably thirty-six to forty inches in diameter and so between the canal wall and the house, they feel that any disruption can be more problematic and that's why we were, um, recommended to build on the existing foundation.
Ah, okay, that answers part of your question.
And what was the other part of the question?
Well, perhaps, you know, if you have forensic inspections from an arborist or someone, perhaps your neighbor could share those with you, so they don't have to feel potentially that those trees are gonna get lost. I think they're more concerned about the trees dying and falling over on their house than they are the actual demise and the loss of the tree. And, uh, conwoods are notoriously long-lived but they do have a life expectancy that ends it. And I know that we've got quite a few, the mining crew come over and take power lines and get shot, so that could be part of the reason why we received a twelve-dollar message from your neighbor.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate the input. And, of course, you know, we wanna make sure that we maintain the trees and keep them, you know, as healthy as possible. So, you know, we can certainly, you know, prior to any kind of construction, we'll have that looked at.
Okay, sure, thank you for sharing.
Yeah, just, and you're gonna have challenges, um, because you're gonna put all this investment into this remodel and, uh, have those huge limbs hanging over your brand-new house, I mean, I could see one, I mean, you gotta do it big sense and if you gotta take one down or, or trim the branches, now's the time to do it, I guess, but I can see it's a win-win as I'm looking at this. We'll get, bring it back, uh, to, as we talk as a commission, but I can see there's lots of advantages for everybody, not only the community, yourself, neighbors, if you try to keep those trees where they are, so I appreciate you trying to keep those trees where they are during the construction process.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. Um, we'll open up the public comment portion, any members from the public who'd like to speak on this, please approach the podium. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back up here for discussion, um. And who wants to start on this one?
I guess, as far as the, using the same building envelope, I, I like it because, uh, like, if you can try to save the trees, you can and it provides screening, right? I mean, everybody knows that's a very popular channel and, um, I think I'm trying to appreciate the trees being there and I think, uh, just keeping what we're all used to looking at when we go through there, uh, keep the trees there, I think that'd be a plus, so as far as trying to shift the house closer to the channel, I don't, in my opinion, I don't think that makes a lot of sense. Uh, I guess the question at hand is, do we agree with the massing going vertical? And it kind of, by looking at the neighbors to the west, it all looks like they must have done that. So I think that's probably pretty common in this areas, when they remodel, the houses are going higher. I guess a safe assumption.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's not only that, but right now, the house itself is, um, is really not even a full story and a half, so getting a, you know, reusable second floor to have bedrooms in, in the most modest way possible.
Not to interrupt, but if you want it for the record, if you wanna come up and put it in the microphone.
Um, actually, the applicant, Olivia Sadowski with AS Dowsky Designs. Um, so maybe just a further comment on that, I think one of the things for me when I went to see the property for the first time, it was the summer months and these trees were in full bloom and, you know, my immediate reaction was more from a, you know, a kind of a agricultural sort of this tree is many here forever, like, please, they were not moving the house. And so can we design a home that, you know, is modest enough that can accommodate your needs and still maintain, you know, the existing condition, so that really was the impetus for the design, um. And, you know, I, I think we tried to be as conservative as possible, I think, you know, hopefully you guys feel the same way, and, you know, as I look at the property too, I, I almost thought that maybe those trees became somewhat of a stability standpoint for that entire channel. So it felt like, you know, it was sort of a necessity. And then, of course, we found out about all the other non-conforming issues along the way, so.
Well, very good point, let's wrap that up, about the root structure.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Um, bringing it back for discussion here, I think, Commissioner McCutcheon, you brought up a good point. Bringing it back for discussion here, I think Commissioner McCutcheon, you brought up a good point. It's a very challenging lot. The setbacks are the setbacks you clearly can't build or remodel with, you know. Really, the only piece that, I mean, I'd like to hear a little one more from on the commission is this. If you go to the massing slide there, I think really what we're talking about is that's, I mean, the upper-left one, the west elevation diagram, that's the one that's closer to the property line than the existing. And we're just talking about that section of the house right there. And in my personal opinion, they've demonstrated what we'd like to see in a lot of these applications where you're building on the foundation. It's pretty modest design and I'm personally for this one. But I'd like to hear some other comments if anyone would like to speak. Commissioner Mullin?
I have watched a number of other in-sill lot constructions that interested me in that part of the lake, including a couple that were, I would consider to be very contemporary. So they had flat roofs versus cable roofs like this. And there are just several houses over on the other side of the channel. So the massing on a similar, very small lot seems to be somewhat conforming for the neighborhood. I haven't looked that much the other direction. I just use these as an example because they were recently built. This is going to be something that's recently constructed. You don't really have much option but to use the footprint. Most of these other houses were slightly wider, slightly deeper, the lots were slightly wider and slightly deeper, but direct like sure. So those setbacks are pretty much written and scum. The partial approval, could you just, could you explain again, could you go over the partial approval that you brought to the table to us?
I was really just suggesting that the planning commission discuss that additional mass within that extremely substandard setback, which is reflected, you know, in this area here that I'm circling or the existing portion that encroaches at two-point-seven feet.
Okay.
I was just wanting the commission to discuss that, if it was appropriate to go up over the existing or to inset slightly just to minimize the mass from the neighbor's standpoint, if it's feasible. I'm not sure. I don't know structurally if that's something that's easy to do, but just to have that discussion.
Commissioner Kirshner?
Yeah, I was gonna say that from looking at the floor plan and design and stuff, I don't have an issue with that. And I say that because in looking at the floor plan on level one, level two, I don't believe this is an egregious house. You know, they're not trying to put a monstrous house here. I mean, the floor plans are very modest, it accommodates bedrooms, a living room. There's, you know, kind of an eating kitchen area with no separate formal dining room or anything like that. I feel like, I feel like there is a good faith effort upon the applicant here to truly make this work as closely as possible within confines there. I feel like they've done a really good job with that and I generally, of all the discussion points here, I'm supportive of this application for those reasons. Sticking to the original foundation and I feel like it's a very modest floor plan and just overall house size to accommodate having a house there without bump overboard and asking for a lot from us.
Anyone else? To stop short a bit, we're better than I just would agree with what Scott just said. In that case, entertain a motion if anyone's willing.
I would make a motion to approve LA twenty-three dash zero-zero-zero-zero-one-nine at nineteen forty Shadywood Road as applied.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I have one comment if I could make an amendment to that. Can we fence these trees that we're talking about in this application? Is that something I'm assuming they're gonna have? Sil- silt fence for the lake, I think it'd be appropriate. We've been talking about trees for a while. I assume that's common practice, but maybe it's a bad assumption?
No.
Okay, that's definitely, because that would look bad. Is that, is that okay?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I think that's fine in my motion.
Okay.
So the motion is to approve as applied with silt fencing around the large connoisseur trees?
Yeah, some type of protective fencing so that you don't have sort of cowboy there with a bobcat that accidentally runs into him. We all know about it. We don't want to reckon, but who knows who's working on the house, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Still support the second?
Yeah.
Okay. So motion and a second, let's put it to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Here we have no opposed, motion passes. And that ends the public hearing items. In other business, we have LA twenty-two dash five-eight, which is a sketch plan. Sherwood Properties, Matthew Tierney, two-three-zero-five, Bayview Place. Ms. Kirshner?
I understand that applicant is unable to be here this evening, but I think there's a representative of the applicant in the audience. Thank you. The applicant would like to rearrange the lot lines of the subject properties in order to create two more uniform, regular, rectangular-shaped lots. As the lots exist today, they are substandard with regard to area for the district. Currently, the L shape of the unaddressed property is not very functional. Normally, the purpose for a sketch plan application is to receive feedback on a potential subdivision resulting in a preliminary and final plot application. In this case, a boundary line adjustment or lot line arrangement, rearrangement can be accomplished administratively as long as there are no new nonconformities created. The boundary line change will result in twenty-three oh-five Bayview Place, shown here in green, gaining land and the unaddressed property, the red lot, losing land. Therefore, a new different nonconforming lot will be created. However, due to the new nonconformity, the boundary line adjustment does not qualify for administrative approval without prior approval of a variance, which would require a public hearing at a different meeting. The existing configuration is awkward with the L-shaped lot wrapping around twenty-three oh-five Bayview property. There are existing nonconformities in the existing conditions for both properties as outlined. All the proposed configuration includes the need for variances on each lot. Lot width for the proposed westerly lot and lot width in front air setback for the proposed easterly lot. The orientation may make more sense with regard to establishment of increased buildable width for the western lot, sixty-foot width increasing to seventy-four and a more standard lot shape for both lots. The application does not require a public hearing, which to date, we've received no public comment. While no formal action is required this evening, the commission's discussion should bring to light potential issues to be addressed prior to submission of a formal application. The proposal could be accomplished in one of two ways. Both require some a little bit of practical difficulty analysis. Variance application plus subdivision exception, which is administrative, or a preliminary plot, including identified variances, plus a final plot. Those are the two separate tracks that this application could take. Planning commission should discuss the two options and provide the applicant with preferred direction regarding next steps and any guidance on their proposed rearrangement of the lot lines. That is all I have, other than I can clip through some aerial photos for you, but I can answer questions if you have any. Thank you.
Any questions for staff on this one? So I do have a question. Essentially, we have two existing lots today. One is accessed primarily off of Bayview, well, actually, both are. This would be not changing the number of lots, but it would be make the existing lots more usable. But one would be moving from Bayview to Navarre Lane access.
Solely to Navarre Lane?
Because right now it's.
It's got signage on both.
If something like this were to be approved, there's accessory buildings that are, that would not be within each lot existing. Are they, how do those get handled in this type of situation? I think there's a garage.
I don't believe that the garage is there anymore.
It's gone. Okay, so it's just, got it. So that would be an issue then. Those are my questions. Anyone else? Questions for staff?
I have, I have maybe a little more knowledge of this lot than I care to. So, a long story short, the home at twenty-three oh-five Bayview Place was renovated and sold. When it was purchased by the renovator, I represent him in that purchase, but have no financial bearing on the property or anything like that. I did not represent him on the sale of it. But when he bought it down where he was retained more, the number thirty-one where the, where the curse is right now, there was that detached garage. And then there was a staircase like cut into that hillside right above where proposed dividing line is that went up to the rear of that home and there was no garage at twenty-three oh-five. So that detached garage was a garage for twenty-three oh-five and it was accessed down off of Navarre Lane. So the, there was now an attached garage added to twenty-three oh-five. The one down on Navarre Lane was removed. I think the concerns that I had, knowing all of that and walking this lot, the to-be-created red lot, as it stands today as an L, it has a nice flat buildable spot off of Bayview Place. Not totally flat, but relatively flat. And that is a steep climb as it moves down towards Navarre Lane there. And I just worry about are, are we creating the best possible lot for, yeah, not are we creating the best possible, but if we were to be okay with this, you know, any development onto that is gonna have some significant, you know, retaining walls and things like that just based on how far the red lot comes down towards Navarre Lane from the back to the front, if that makes sense.
Or drainage?
Yeah.
If the applicant is here and would like to speak, certainly can approach the podium.
Sure.
I would, I would just like to point out that thirty-three twenty Navarre Lane was recently constructed. And by I say recently, I mean like in the last five years. And it's probably of similar grade to the lot.
Like that one was a little flatter.
It's a pretty, a pretty steep block from my recollection of reviewing that permit, but your point is taken.
My name is Jacob Conklin. I'm friends with Matt. I really have no stake in this at all, so I don't know what I can really add, other than I've just been there maybe three or four times, so. I don't know if there are any questions for me or any questions for?
So taking advantage of you being here and the other person. The question we just brought up about the elevation and how it changes, my concern perhaps with the drainage, do you perceive that there is, you know?
From my understanding, from being in the elevation and change, it's mostly from the line that is drawn for the new, the new division, the new borderline. That is the most change right there, I feel. So that red lot, I don't feel there's much elevation change on that lot.
So from the, from what would be the rear to the front or from the side?
Yeah, from the rear, the house going from the green to the red is the greatest elevation change. The red itself would be barely, barely, you know.
Do we go staff in one-foot increments?
It's on the surface, yes.
Nine forty-two to the green, fifty-eight.
It's a nine fifty-eight.
On how I see it, yep. Looking at the smallest. Well, that's all I have.
Yeah, there's nothing. Any other questions for the applicant? We can bring it back here for discussion and give some guidance on how they should proceed. To me, I appreciate what Commissioner Kirshner pointed out about the elevation and that's something we should definitely look at and make sure we're not creating a problem with this lot line adjustment. But if that is met by the applicant, I don't see a reason why we wouldn't, or why I wouldn't approve something like this or be for it.
Oh, you would or?
Why would, why would not? I would be, I would be okay with approving a lot line rearrangement like this so long as they're able to articulate that this grade won't be an issue.
I can just interject that we just are not in the practice of approving nonconforming lots, even if there is a subdivision involved in it. We've discussed this issue before. I can't remember one that went to city council.
I think what they're proposing is taking two nonconforming lots and rearranging them into two nonconforming lots.
Correct.
So we're not, we're not creating a new existing nonconforming. But I agree with your comment that we don't want to create nonconforming. But this is, you have two nonconforming and we're just rearranging them to make them more suitable for use, I feel like.
Well, then I guess we leave it to the wisdom of our city council.
Anyone else have comments for the applicant, give them direction for this?
I'd say continue on because I don't like to lay lots around here. I think this is the way it's divided up. I'm sure they worked with staff. I think this makes sense. Assuming that if you're gonna build a house, it's gonna face Navarre Lane. I don't know why you face it towards the neighbor thirty-three twenty, but assuming that's where the building envelope is, and I agree. If it's usually is not conforming, it's kind of a showstopper, but since they are already in that state now, I think this matters the situation, in my opinion. Assuming it's a buildable lot or they can, where the builder can work with that grade, which I'm sure they can, and it doesn't add like a two-story retaining wall, which I don't think it will, so I think it's eight feet drop. So to me, it seems like a better situation.
Can we create a conforming lot from the two lots?
Of course you could. You could combine them into one.
And that would not be an excessively large parcel for the area, would it? Would it be on a carrier with the area?
No. However, they're not required to combine them.
Okay.
I think it makes sense to do it like this. It just cleans it up, does not create any new nonconforming lots.
Although the reason concerning mine, I also look out my own background to retain walls and add a slope rate. I mean, not that anything's possible, but, you know, it's a concern, something that needs to be considered from a development standpoint. But I don't think that it's an absolute, you know, hard wrangle that it's gonna stop any better development there.
Commissioner Erickson? Excuse me. Okay. Well, let me kind of summarize for the applicant, because it's the sketch plan, there's no official vote on this. But to bring it, to summarize it, I think it sounds like we're mostly in favor and could approve something like this. I think the sticking point and something they might want to articulate better would be how and where a house can fit on that lot as far as with the topography. But otherwise, I think that's all we have.
Yeah, I think, and that's a reiterative, but the driveways, assuming they're in Navarre Lane, right? That was essential.
I, yeah, I don't know honestly. I would have assumed so.
The more data, the better, right?
Thank you.
I have a question. Does the commission have any direction regarding the next application steps for the applicant? They don't, this isn't something that's required to be platted, but there's going to be a public hearing process in either case, so they can make a formal variance application for the nonconformities that have been listed and then proceed, if approved, with an administrative boundary line adjustment to create the configuration that you see on the screen or the, they can be directed to a formal preliminary plot application so that they would be replating the lots rather than rearranging the lot lines with variances. So it's, they accomplish the same thing.
My, my mind goes to your first option with a variance application. I think that for, for something where we're not actually subdividing, I don't know if it would be necessary for preliminary and final plot. That's where my mind goes, if anyone else has any comments on that, Commissioner.
I did something similar when I bought our vacant lot more, six years ago now and grabbed a chunk off the neighbor to the rear and combined it to mine. And I did it through a variance process and it was. And I did it through a variance process, and it was relatively, I'd say the path of least resistance, maybe.
Sounds like that's the direction?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, brings us to item nine, planning commission liaison with the city council schedule.
Um, yep, so included in your packet was a, a planning commission, um, liaison schedule. This is something that's a yearly kind of assignment, where we outline different commissioners who are on, on the mission to attend, um, city council, and use their questions or concerns. So a schedule was made and included in your packet. Um, staff is asking for a motion to adopt the schedule through March of twenty twenty-four.
Could I, uh, I actually have something on the day that I'm scheduled here. Could I flip with either, um, John or Chris, one way or the other?
So September eleventh is the day you have conflict?
I, I do.
So, um, August fourteenth, Chris Ballas is supposed to be represented, or October ninth, John Rustler?
Yeah, or we, I just thought that was the easy change.
Yep, or if anybody else is available.
We got this, July tenth or whatever.
Yeah.
Okay. I can make that change.
Okay. Any other changes or comments?
So we're voting to adopt with the changes?
Yep.
I would make a motion to adopt with the changes. Second?
I have a, I have a motion and a second. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And item ten, update on April tenth, city council meeting.
Relatively short update. There was one item for the, um, was it called Club of Parking Lot Contact? Um, it was a conditional use permit. The city council adopted that on their consent agenda. That's my only update. Oh, no, I have one more update. We had a, uh, a resident apply for a planning commission position, so that interview, uh, for the alternate position will take place in an upcoming planning, uh, city council work session. Um, right now, with the new appointees, we do not currently have an alternate, uh, for the commission. So, uh, the city council will be interviewing that alternate position, and I will give you an update on their decision at your next meeting.
Great. Thank you for that. Um, with all that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. Second? Anyone?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, and then vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Mr. Eager, the second?
Two agreeable.
So you have a nice, I'm just agreeing.
I'm not interviewing that. The council interviews that. Don't let them.
We're real.
Well, I'm just like, I don't think anybody's agreeing, so.
You did a great job, I think, for us to get seven items to your little over two hours.
Yeah, of course.
Well, I'll try to give it up to any good stuff to work with here.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, um.
Just.
Mark, why is it on Mark's side? Because.
You're showing up.
I just think.